May I, please, come to order. This is a committee of the whole meeting of the Village Board of Willmet. Welcome, thank you for joining us tonight. For those of you who are unfamiliar with committee of the whole meetings, they are less formal meetings of the board. They are working sessions of the Village Board, and under Illinois law, all meetings of the Village Board are open, public meetings. So what you are here tonight for is a working meeting of the Village Board. Because of the interest in this particular topic, we're also televising this meeting as well on Channel 6 right now, also on the Internet, and then a video will be available on willmet.com afterwards. You can see the cameras. The red light indicates the active camera. Now, as described on the agenda for tonight's meeting, the purpose of the meeting is to hear a presentation from the Minimum Wage and Paid Sick Leave Working Group. The board will listen to the presentation, then ask some questions of the Chair of the group about the group, the process, and the report that's been prepared. That report is available on our website. I believe it is 400 and how many pages? 436 pages. So there's actually quite a bit of very good information in that, so those of you who are taking an interest in this issue, I would encourage you to review that report. For point of clarification, the board will not be voting on any ordinances tonight. That's not the purpose of this meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to review and discuss the report from the working group. We will also listen to public comment during this meeting. Now, at the conclusion of public comment, the board will discuss next steps, which will include setting dates for the Village Board to consider a repeal of the opt-out ordinances. And that will happen at a regular meeting of the Village Board. And as is our standard practice, according to our rules, we will introduce those ordinances at one meeting, and then we will consider adoption of those ordinances at the following meeting. So it will be at that second meeting, when the Village Board will actually be called upon to vote upon the ordinances, and we will determine that schedule going forward at the end of this meeting. So again, the board will not be discussing or debating the merits of these ordinances tonight, and to reiterate, the board will not be voting on any ordinances tonight. Our focus is the presentation by the working group. Now, prior to inviting Chair Jacoby up, I would like to introduce our Cook County Commissioner, Larry Sufferton, who was asked to briefly address the board this evening. So Commissioner Sufferton, the floor is yours. Welcome.
Thank you, President. Thank you, members of the board. I wanted to come here to thank all of you for taking one of the most constructive approaches to this issue. I appeared before you the day that you voted on this last time, but I think the efforts that you did in putting together the working group that was headed by John Jacoby and the other citizens who went around this community to take input, to look at things, and the report, which, what did you say, 465 pages?
436, I believe.
Is one of the most remarkable reports by a municipality that's been produced here in Cook County. It's already been used in Western Springs when they opted back into the county ordinance because of the depth of issues you raised here.
Please, we are not at a football game. Thank you.
And I didn't mean to get that.
No, 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 it's okay. I didn't see you clapping.
I want to thank the Village staff for walking me through this, the detail of this report. I think that the thing I want to say to you is that you've produced a document that looks at all of the facts that I've been hearing for the last many months on this issue, and it rationally looks at each of those. It also looks at what the law is. In my district, there have been, the majority of the communities I represent, which are 12 in total, have stayed in this ordinance, and are seem to be thriving. There have been no lawsuits filed. I would hope that as you look at the data that have been given by your citizens to this board, that you will be able to say that this is a reasonable approach to protecting the public's rights and the public's safety. So again, I thank you for the approach that you've taken, and it's a pleasure to represent the people of Willmet with you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sufferton. Okay, so before calling Chair Jacoby to make the working group presentation, I would like to personally thank all the members of the working group who volunteered their time in service of the community, and my understanding is there are a number of them here in the audience tonight. So I would ask them to stand and be recognized, and I won't bang the gavel if you applaud for the working group, okay? So, members of the working group, please stand. Thank you for your service. You know, stepping into a controversial issue is not the easiest thing in the world to do, and I really appreciate the efforts of all of the members of the working group, but in particular, former Village President John Jacoby. So, Mr. Jacoby, if you would approach, and I will give you the floor. Actually, before that, though, let me also thank, there are a number of residents who have been very engaged here, and I would like to thank all of those residents who made a positive contribution to not only the process with the working group, but also to the report. So, thank you very much. Mr. Jacoby, welcome.
Well, thank you very much, and good evening to you all. And I'd like to start by thanking you, President Bolinski, and all the members of the board for giving me the opportunity to contribute to this very worthy project. And I also want to thank some other folks, starting with the members of the working group. And there they are. Brian Fabs, John Hazer, Beth Lambrecht, George Rafidi, Laura Saleh, and Therese Steinkin. All of these working group members took our mission very, very seriously. Without diminishing the role of any of the others, I'd like to make particular note of the contribution of one of them in particular, and that is Brian Fabs, who has more experience than any of the rest of us in conducting this kind of a study. And he also gave us access to experts in analytics who were able to help us put the data in some kind of sensible order, free of charge, I might add. Brian also came up with a very useful approach that's reflected in this report of deciding what questions it is that the Village Board would probably want us to answer, and then ranking the information we're supplying to the board in terms of its relevance and reliability. The next group I'd like to thank are the members of the public who actively participated in our seven meetings and contributed their suggestions between meetings. These folks furnished a great deal of input as the working group developed this report. Our process was wide open. Everyone who attended our meetings was invited to speak freely, and freely they did speak. Everything the working group did was posted in the village's website and emailed to folks who expressed an interest in this project, so that they would know where we were headed at all times. And finally, the staff assistance you provided, the working group, enhanced our ability dramatically to produce this report in a timely manner. I venture to say that Mike Bremen and John Presner know more about this report and what went into it than anyone else in this room, and based on their work, I can say without reservation that the residents of this village are fortunate to have a village administration staffed by people of this caliber. The working group saw this as its mission, provide the Village Board with the information that's relevant in deciding whether to maintain the status quo or to adopt, or to opt into the two county ordinances, one setting minimum wages, the other providing for paid sick days. We asked ourselves, what are the important questions that the Village Board would want us to answer, and we came up with the three questions on this slide. We then tried to give you all the important, relevant, available information necessary to answer these questions. We tried very hard to keep bias from creeping into the report, or into our selection of studies and other information to provide to you, or into the questions we asked in our surveys. We make absolutely no recommendation in this report, either directly by way of a express recommendation, or indirectly by way of trying to slant the report. One of the first things the working group did was to develop this table, which attempts to accurately summarize the Cook County ordinances. It's in the report. We had the able assistance of Corporation Counsel Jeff Stein. We felt that an accurate summary was critical to an intelligent debate over the opt-in, opt-out question. For example, some members of the public have communicated to us that they were concerned that high school students wouldn't be able to find employment if the county minimum wage is raised to $11 or more. But, as this table points out, the minimum wage ordinance doesn't apply to persons under the age of 18, or to persons during their first 90 days of employment. So it is a little inaccurate to argue that people under the age of 18 are going to be disadvantaged by the possibility of opting in. Some of the highlights of our report, that's the rest of the table, but some of the highlights of our report, the Illinois Department of Employment Security data finds that 20% of workers in Willmet are considered low-wage workers, that is, they're earning less than $1,250 per month. Another point, the majority of low-wage workers in retail, they work in that sector, 34%, hotel and food services is 22%, and other services are 11%, and healthcare is 10%. So that is where the overwhelming majority of those folks live, or rather, work. A survey of Willmet businesses found that 54 were opposed to the county minimum wage ordinance. 70% of restaurants were opposed, 70% of retail businesses were opposed, 53 of service businesses were opposed. A survey of residents conducted by phone found that 66% support the Cook County minimum wage ordinance. 85% of the respondents indicated they would continue to patronize or be more likely to patronize Willmet residents if prices increased due to the minimum wage law. Now, the academic literature is inconclusive. We've included a number of studies, but it's inconclusive in that there is no commonly accepted opinion regarding the impact of minimum wage on employment. The Seattle situation was, is one that is widely discussed in the community. There is a study of that situation in Seattle. It is not a peer-reviewed study, and another subsequent study disagreed with its conclusions. But we have included that information for you because of the public interest in that subject. In general, the literature finds that minimum wage has a small impact or no impact on employment, and where it does impact employment, it generally impacts very low-skilled workers, and in particular teenagers, but as I mentioned before, teenagers are more or less exempted from this ordinance, from the county ordinance. The businesses most at risk due to an increased minimum wage are, for example, lower-quality restaurants. I'm shy away from that term, because I don't think any of the restaurants in town are of low quality, but those who are operating closer to the margin. And here are some of the highlights about paid sick leave. Based on our employer survey, 75% of Willmet businesses provide some form of paid time off to full-time employees, and 45% provide paid time off to part-time employees.
That's the, I think that's the stat that was corrected, right?
We didn't correct the slide. We did correct the report, but that should be 35% provide paid time off to part-time employees. A cost model developed by the Civic Consulting Alliance finds that the paid sick leave ordinance would cost businesses between 0.7 and 1.5% of payroll, with a maximum, absolute maximum, cost of 2%. A survey of Willmet businesses found that 57% opposed the Cook County paid sick leave ordinance. 75% of restaurants were opposed, 68% of retail businesses were opposed, and 63% of service businesses were opposed. And a survey of Willmet residents found that 67% support the Cook County paid sick leave ordinance. 32% of survey respondents would be more likely to patronize a Willmet resident if they offered paid sick leave. 56% said it would have no effect on their decision. The academic literature concerning paid sick leave generally finds such laws have a public health benefit. Parents, for example, who have paid sick leave are less likely to send sick children to school. Flu rates are found to decrease after employees gain access to paid sick leave. Those without paid sick leave are three times more likely to forego medical care for their family, and the lowest-income group of workers without paid sick leave were found to be at the highest risk of delaying and foregoing medical care for themselves and their family members. So that is pretty much what, those are highlights of the report. The report obviously being close to 350 pages, or whatever, 400, whatever the number is. I can't stand up here and give you the entire contents of the report, wouldn't even try. It's all there for your consideration. I think that folks who want to opt in have data in this report that supports their position, and I think that folks who favor the status quo can also find data that supports their position. Ultimately, it's up to this board to sort through all the data, decide what's the most important, and make a judgment on the issue, and I wish you the best of luck in that process.
Thank you, Mr. Jacoby. I have, I have one question, and I don't know if any of the other board members have a question, but just regarding the surveys. So we did a survey of the business community and of the residents, and my recollection from the report was that we actually had a very, very high response rate for a survey from the business community. It was like 39, 39%, which is really high. So first off, I commend, I guess it's Mr. Fabs' firm for leading that charge and getting that done, but I assume the working group was very pleased with that.
Mr. Fabs' group that he put us in contact with helped analyze the data, but I think a lot of credit goes to the Chamber of Commerce for encouraging their members to respond. There was a great deal of publicity given to the survey. There were emails sent to our entire list of licensees, encouraging people to respond, and I think it was a concerted effort that was made to get that level of response, and it indeed was very satisfying.
So the other question I had was around the resident survey. Was there any additional information? We saw, we saw the questions and then the percentages in the report. Was there any additional information provided to residents, you know, hi, I'm the person from the survey firm? Did they roll right into the first question, or was there any background information provided?
Well, as you know, we retained at Village expense a company that conducted the survey for us, and we followed their professional advice as to how to conduct the survey. And one of the, one of our concerns was exactly what you're expressing, that people should be informed before they're asked their opinions on these ordinances. The problem with doing that is when the introduction gets too long, people lose interest and may not participate in the survey. So anyway, what the survey company recommended was an opening statement. We had a much longer one prepared, but they cut it back, and it read as follows. Hello, my name is so-and-so. I work for Fallon Public Opinion Research and have been retained by the Village of Willmet to conduct a public survey of attitudes about local issues and public policies affecting Willmet. This is not a sales call, and I'm not selling anything. Hopefully, they are still on the line. I merely want to ask you a few short questions regarding a policy matter that the Village of Willmet is considering, is seeking opinions about from its residents. Your answers will be kept strictly confidential, and your answers will be pooled with those of other residents, so the results will be anonymous. Then it heads into a couple of preliminary questions, and then there is some information provided about background.
Inside the questions, yeah.
In each of the substantive questions, but that is the extent of it.
So it, the survey firm basically said it's impossible to conduct a survey with a two-minute introduction, because people will hang up on you.
Exactly.
Got it, okay. That's helpful, that's helpful color for us. Any other questions for Chairman Jacoby about the process, or the working group, or the report?
Maybe we could discuss the number of residents that were surveyed and how that is representative of the community. I think a lot of people had questions about, you know, I wasn't asked, I wasn't, I didn't get a phone call. If we could just kind of explain, you know, how that happened and what the process was.
Well, the survey target number was 300 residents. As you'll see, there were 303 that actually were surveyed, and that was because there were some simultaneous surveys going on at the end of the process. And so by the time they said halt, 303 had been completed. And the number 300 is what our professional consultant told us would be adequate to obtain the sentiment of the community within approximately a 5% error rate, plus or minus. So you could do more than 300, I suppose, and narrow that error rate down a little bit, but the cost would go up. I believe our cost for this survey was about $9,000. Mr. Bremen, correct? So we chose to do 300 surveys, which was the same number of surveys that District 39 and the Village had done, I believe, in a survey conducted the prior year.
And were the people just selected randomly? Who received the call?
They were, yes, they were. There was a target for males and a target for females, but other than that, it was random.
And then a couple of people have asked, so for those people who don't have home landlines, so for people who only have cell phones and things like that, how, does the Village have that information? And just want to make sure that that's a good representation of the community.
The Village doesn't have that information, but the survey company has Willmet cellphone numbers as part of its random selection pool.
Got it, perfect. Just keeping track of cellphone numbers, Tom, but thank you for clarifying.
Talk about a little bit of the process, or how were the questions developed that were asked of the residents?
As I recall it, Mr. Bremen and I kind of said, well, what does the Village Board want to know, or what should it want to know, or what do we think it wants to know? And we came up with a list of questions, and they were nurtured from that point on. Nothing, nothing that we came up with was not changed, you know? It was, it was a process where the questions were presented to the public and to the working group, and they were massaged and came out the way they did.
So going to the, so it was you and Mike came up with the initial questions?
I believe so, is that correct? Is that your recollection, Mr. Bremen?
That is, and we went through six different revisions of the questions. Some of those with the working group and members of the public, some internal, and some with the research company based on their professional recommendation. So there was a lot of change from the start to the end, with a lot of public participation in that process.
And the public participation, was that just at the working group meetings, or how was the public?
It was at the working group meetings, and throughout the whole process, we took emails and comments that way as well, and incorporated that into changes and revisions where we thought appropriate.
There was a lot of that kind of thing going on, where after a meeting, and we would try to get our agenda out as promptly as possible to give lots of time before the next meeting. And we would indicate the subjects that we would be taking up at the next meeting, and providing what documentation we could, and inviting public input. We got quite a bit through that process. Mr. Bremen would take that, and Mr. Presner, and they would revise the documents, and we'd discuss them at the meetings, and it was wide open. There were many people participating in those conversations, and we had some people who came out as regulars, and then we had others who dropped in, you know, once or twice.
John, to get the 300 number, were there a lot of people contacted who would not participate, never answered, or, I mean, did we reach out to 1,000 people and eventually get 300 responses, or?
I'm assuming that there was a significant number, more than 300, but I do not know the answer to that question.
Okay, one more.
So, one other question just now, based on the business survey. So did you have a targeted number of businesses that you were hoping to respond, and did that, did you, did the results, the number of responses, was that higher than what you expected?
It was higher than I expected, I think it was higher than most of us expected. It was an excellent rate of return on those surveys. We do not represent that to be a statistically valid survey.
Okay, that's what's going to be my second question.
You know, we didn't conduct it as a, as we did the resident survey, which does have statistical validity. The business survey was sent out to all the businesses, and those that chose to respond did respond. It's a high response rate. Whether that same rate would have been, or the results would have been different, had more or fewer responded, I don't know.
Was it anonymous?
It was anonymous.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Dot, if I can add, you know, we're very confident in the results of the business survey for the purposes of the board's discussion, because when you look at the distribution of licensed businesses in Willmet, the survey respondents were reflective of that. So we have 26 service businesses, 26% of our licensed businesses in Willmet are services. 25% of the respondents to the business survey were service businesses, and that's consistent throughout. So the Village Board should feel very good that we have a nice cross-section that's well-representative of the Willmet business community.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Certainly, certainly 300 out of whatever, 19,000, 20,000 adults is a much smaller sample than 40% of the, of the business licensees. Chairman Jacoby, thank you again for your service here. We really appreciate not just your help, but the entire working group's efforts, as well as the efforts of members of the public who participated in the process. So thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move into public comment now, and I have a little bit of an introduction here, so. So first off, if you do plan to address us tonight, please come up to the podium, please speak in the microphone, and tell us your name and where you live. We ask that you speak clearly in the microphone, so everyone in the room can hear you. Those of you who are taller, this is not a problem that I have, but those of you who are taller, you may actually have to lean over into the microphone. We've had a number of occasions when taller individuals speak, but the microphone doesn't pick them up, so we have people in the back of the room who can't hear. And before we begin And before we begin public comment, I'm going to allow people to register their support for or opposition to opting out of the county's ordinance without actually having to take the time to address the board. I've done that in a number of meetings recently, and it works quite well. So what I'm going to do is I will ask people to raise their hands to show their support or opposition. We will count each group and include that in the record, and of course, every person's participation in this exercise is optional. So please listen carefully, though, because the term opt-out can be confusing. I will try to make it clear. But again, I'm going to ask people, if they're interested, to register either their support for or opposition to the issue at hand. So let me start with, if you would like to express your support for the village opting out of the county's ordinances, that is, the action that was taken, that is, not having the county's ordinance take effect in the village, please raise your hand now. It's everybody present in the room, and we understand that not everyone's a Willmet resident. So we have to count. Mike, you want to count? And Tim, would you count? So please keep your hands up. I've got 16 on the left. I've got 17, okay. I've got roughly 25. I've got 25, that's what I got, okay. Let's say it's approximately 42 people raised their hand. Okay, so now, if you'd like to express your opposition to the village opting out of the county's ordinance, that is repealing the ordinance that we passed last June, that is, you would like the county's ordinances to take effect in the village, please raise your hand now. Split difference of 28, and then. Okay, so for the record, 42 people expressed their support for the village opting out, and 56 people expressed their opposition to the village opting out. Okay, now, the big question, may I see a show of hands of those people who would like to address the board? So given the number of people who wish to speak, let me remind everyone of the village's rules for public comment during a public meeting. In order to give every person a fair and equal opportunity to address the board, each person will be allotted three minutes to speak. Individuals will be allowed to address the board only once tonight. Also, I ask that all speakers be considerate of each other this evening. Please be respectful of each other's opinions and refrain from commenting during the hearing unless it is your turn at the podium. Please refrain from applauding, booing, otherwise making comments or noise. Please address your comments to the board and not to others in the room. Also, as a matter of courtesy for those who are patiently waiting, please be concise and try to avoid repetition in your comments. If another speaker has already said what you plan to say, you may say that you agree with that speaker's comments to save us all time. So in that vein, if you can use less than three minutes, that would be appreciated. Now, Mr. Frenzer, the village manager who's sitting to my right, will be responsible for watching the time for each speaker. He will raise one finger when two minutes have gone by. That will alert you that you have one minute left, that's why you get the one finger. He will also give a 30-second warning by raising his hand, and he will let the speakers also know when their time is up. Again, please be considerate of other speakers who wish to be heard and conclude your remarks on time. Now, if everyone who's indicated that they wish to speak takes the entire three minutes allotted, public comment will run a little bit more than an hour and a half, and that should be fine, given our normal 11:30 motion. So, yes, we're only at 7:42, so it would be 8:42, 9:15 or so. All right, so let me see people in the first five rows here that want to speak. No, just on the right side. Okay, so all of you, please get up and get in line here, and then we'll do the next back part after that. So again, please state your name and tell us where you live, and Mr. Frenzer has, whoa, 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 wait a second. There were like eight people that raised their hand, and now there's 15 in line, so. So, okay. If I knew there were that many people waiting, I wouldn't have asked all five rows to come up. I would have asked just two rows to come up, because the people at the back of the line are going to be waiting for 45 minutes. So when I ask again, please be, I mean, I'm not discouraging anybody from speaking. I just, the reason I'm asking and I'm going row by row is so that people don't have to stand up too long. Okay, so Mr. Frenzer has the time. Please tell us your name and where you live, and the floor is yours.
Hi, team, I'm Alexandra Idenberg. I live over by Illinois and Hunter. I'm a mom of four kids under five. I'm a proud Willmet resident, and I'm a small business owner. I own an insurance practice, as well as run a nonprofit organization, and I employ several people. I'm proud to employ people and pay them good wages and offer them sick pay. As a small business owner, I think of myself as being a part of a community of people that are a backbone of not just Willmet, but also our state. I think of small businesses being a critical component of driving our state forward, and I passionately create employment for myself and others. And I do so because I know that when I do take on a new employee, it's something that I can afford. I can afford to take them on and pay them a good wage. When I give people wage increases, when I give them paid time off, I do it because I can do it confidently. And I do that because I want to create employment and do it with joy. I give quite a bit of paid sick time because I believe in employing women who are taking care of their parents as well as their children. And I think that there's a lot of saying, there's a lot of people saying that businesses don't like this, and so I want you guys to know wholeheartedly, as a small business owner, I love paying great wages, and it's something that I do because I like it. Today's also an important day for me. It happens to be my youngest child's birthday. He turned one today. His first bit of activism was attending the last meeting where we talked about minimum wage. He was the kid crying in the third or fourth row over here. He was pretty bummed that we did not opt in to the ordinance. And so he's not here today because he's at that weird toddling age, but I'm really proud of the efforts that he and my family have taken on as Willmet residents to really support raising wages. In that vein, I really think that Willmet is a lot about family, and it's one of the biggest things, the biggest reasons why I live here, and I think so many people choose to raise their families here, is we're an amazing place for people to thrive. My young daughter's made this pin for me. It's a puzzle piece with some other attachments. And they made this because they believe in equal pay and raising minimum wage, and together we know that we can make a difference. And I'm hoping that you guys stand with us as trustees today and look at all the faces of the people in Willmet who are asking you to join us in opting in. I know that we can make a difference in our own community by paying people fairly, and we need your help to do that. And I, as a business owner, and I'm excited to see other business owners join me and for all of you to join me in opting in. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Okay, so I feel really bad about everybody waiting here. So if you're not sitting in the first two rows, take a seat. We'll start, I'm going to go row by row tonight. So if you're not in the first two rows, take a seat. I don't want you standing up there for half an hour or more. So I'm, you follow me? Everybody who's in line, if you're not sitting in the first two rows, I'm going to go row by row. So you don't have to sit up there for 30 minutes. I mean, if you don't mind, that's fine, but if you're rolling, that's fine, okay.
We've got half the speakers, okay.
All right, welcome. I'm just trying to make it a little easier on everyone tonight.
Of course.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mariah Malavi. I am a Skokie resident, and I have been part of the Skokie community for 10 years. I became pregnant at the age of 19. I knew and understood quickly that it was not the ideal situation to be in, but nevertheless, I moved forward and tried to go to school and work. I was working 40-plus hours a week, earning the minimum wage of $8.25. The financial reality of being a mother weighed down on me every day. I attempted to file for government financial assistance so I could stay in school, however, I was denied because although $8.25 is a measly paycheck, it was above the threshold for assistance. I ended up dropping out of school in order to get another job, just so I could provide necessities for me and my child. Once I had my daughter, I was only able to afford to be out of work for two weeks. Two weeks. That is all the time I had to bond with my daughter, Michaela. To say that this was the most stressful and challenging time of my life is an understatement. I currently work for the insurance people. I am employed by amazing people who decided that they would invest in their employees. Not only do I make way above minimum wage, I am learning every day a new business and new skills. They also are very mom-friendly and generous with their benefits and paid time off. As a single mom, this is the biggest perk that can be given to me, as with littles, you never know when they will not be at their best. This makes me want to work hard every day and be my best for my team. I can now breathe a little easier. Don't get me wrong, I still have a long way to go, but I no longer had to make some of the crazy choices that I am sure not many here know about. Sometimes that looked like me making a choice between doing laundry or purchasing diapers. The diapers would win, and I would find myself washing clothes in my kitchen sink with my dishwashing liquid, or stretching milk with water because I just did not have enough to buy another gallon. Choices that no mom should have to think about making. I'm now at home at a decent hour. I'm able to have dinner with my child and bond. I find myself being optimistic of my future and actually exploring college classes. I would like to take this moment to say thank you to Alexandra and the insurance people for being amazing employers. I would also like to take a moment to ask the Village of Willmet to opt in. Opt in for people like me that have no problem pulling themselves up by bootstraps, but we need the boots first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Zach Kousk, I'm the legislative and political director with Local 881, United Food and Commercial Workers. We represent over 151 residents of Willmet, most notably at the Two Jewels ASCO stores here.
I believe you sent us a letter.
We did, yes. And thank you to the president and the trustees and village staff for allowing us here tonight and undertaking, I agree with Commissioner Sofford, and by far, as someone who has been involved in this now for a couple of years in Cook County, the most in-depth and impressive review of these two pro-worker, pro-family policies. I wanted to come to you today, again, on behalf of the 151 members who are residents of Willmet and our members of Local 881 in some cases. I was just at Lynch with one of them, who had been working in the Jewels here for close to 40 years, to say, we strongly encourage you to opt in, follow your residents' leads, follow your own study, and provide this pro-worker, pro-family, pro-economic reform and policy to all workers within Willmet. And I say that as a union leader, but one that is in a private sector union. 98% of our members are in private sector, food, hospitality, retail. And we've provided these benefits to our members for, in some cases, over 50 years. Why? We handle your food. We check it out. We provide prescriptions for you. We fill your prescriptions in the ASCOs and CVSs. Why in the world would we encourage our members to go to work when they're sick? Or to leave their family when they're sick? Or because of the reforms in this policy, to go to work after they've been a victim of domestic violence? Something that this ordinance is one of the first in the nation to provide protections for and ability to stay home, to recover. We wouldn't. We would never do that. Doesn't make business sense. Our private sector employers agree with that, again, in the retail sector and food sector, which has some of the thinnest profit margins in the industry. We would never encourage them to do so because it doesn't make sense, it's not right for the business, and it's certainly not right for their health or their family's health. We believe in our contracts through negotiations with our business employers, in some cases for over 100 years, that we provide dignity through better wages, better benefits, a voice in the workplace. And that's what we do. And that's why we've been in support of the sick leave and the minimum wage ordinances from day one, because we believe our contracts and our benefits do that for our members, but they should do it for all workers. So that your local economy, your local community, and your families that you serve as elected representatives are also stronger. So provide dignity in the workplace, we do that. Provide dignity outside of life because you make an earnest living. You can stay home and care for yourself and your loved ones without fear of making rent or buying groceries at the end of the week. That's what we do. That's why we strongly support this ordinance, and that's why we would respectfully ask for you to opt back into this and provide the thousands of workers that same dignity every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hello, Mark Wiremiller, Longdale Street. I've got my clock going, I'm going to try to go two minutes here. So I've been called a taxpayer advocate by the Chicago Tribune. Often I come to this board, I talk about lowering property taxes. That's my main issue. I'm concerned that if we increase a forced minimum wage, it's just going to increase taxes. I notice you say that under 18 is not going to be affected, but a lot of employees with the Park District are going to be 19, 20-year-olds, kids home from college. I see this as a tax increase immediately if you start paying these kids, students basically, a higher wage. I'm concerned people are leaving Illinois. We have, if anyone follows this, we have massive declines in population. Chicago Public Schools has 10,000 less kids in Chicago Public Schools this year from last year. People are leaving Illinois, and people are leaving because of things like this, overregulation. Couple thoughts on this survey. I've never been surveyed. I hang up on everybody when they call me, because I don't want anybody calling me. No one calls me on my cellphone number. No offense, but I question the legitimacy of this survey. I just don't see how you can do a survey other than going directly to the people. Phone surveys just don't work, they're not accurate. I'm not sure, no offense to the survey people if they're here, but I've never taken a survey. I just hang up on the people because I don't want to be bothered. So, a couple other quick thoughts. I'm concerned, let's see, actually, that's all I got, a minute 28 seconds, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I request his extra time?
No, sir. Welcome.
First of all, thanks for letting me speak. Irv Cooperman, I'm a resident of Willmet. I think there are a number of issues that need to be identified, and I think some of them are getting mixed. I think the idea of being empathetic to people to earn a good living is important. I think that's an issue. By raising wages, that does things that might help the employee, but not necessarily help the healthy community of Willmet. So for example, Cook County Board does not have a strong reputation for its efficacy. You guys do a great job here in this town. Why would you want to associate with something that is not as good as it could be? Because I think you compromise yourselves and diminish your own capabilities by doing that. That's something I think you should all keep in mind. Old Cook County Hospital has been defunct for a long, long, long time and does nothing for the revenue of Cook County, and there doesn't seem to be any activity to go and do something about this huge piece of property that is being wasted. What else? Carson's, for example, is leaving. You all know that. There are a number of very successful retail centers around Willmet. I would hope, as your responsibility, that you would try to do something about this body of business for which you're losing taxes that are impacting the citizens of the town and also yourselves. I'm guessing that you might be doing something about, at least exploring that as an idea. You don't want to become Cook County Board. That's the point. Last, one of the reasons that I think this town is as thriving as it is, is because it encourages businesses to come here. It increases and helps the tax base. Schools need tax monies to go and be good. The schools in Willmet are very, very good, even outside of Willmet, people know that. For them to continue, there needs to be monies generated somehow. So businesses, I'm done. Businesses need to continue to be attracted here, not to be sent away. Thank you very much for letting me talk.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Tom Scanlon, a Willmet resident since 1982. So many of you know that, because I know you guys. First of all, I want to compliment you on the board on last year's support of small businesses. My focus in my talk today is going to be on small business. Your message to the small businesses and in this community is that you trust the way Willmet small businesses manage their employees' wages and benefits. You trusted that on your vote. Willmet is a small... your vote. Willmet is a small, middle-class community and not Chicago, which is the city that this minimum wage and sick benefit was designed for. It wasn't designed for small business towns. Now, I've been managing a small business since 1982, when I moved here. We have an average of 13 employees, and our monthly customers are all small businesses also. Every month, as a small business, we have to initiate sales, and so do our customers. Small businesses, we all rely on our employers, employees, for success and the profits. In order to achieve that, small businesses have to be very transparent to their team, to their staff. And during profitable years, we share the profits, you know, bonuses and profit sharing during profitable years. But the one thing that no one's discussed or in the surveys is recessions. And during recessions, since I've been doing this since 1982, we've experienced six recessions. And the temporary changes and benefits to that can be severe. We've never had a single layoff from all our small businesses, from our small business, because we've had the transparency and flexibility to make temporary changes to the wages and benefits during those times. Now, due to the new law in Chicago, we no longer have that option to temporarily adjust wages and benefits so that we can make it through the recession with the entire staff. Now, unfortunately, the unintended consequence will be layoffs. Your vote to opt out of the county wage and benefits laws was supportive of the small businesses in Willmet, and you were aware that it's not if, but when we have our next recession hits and has a financial impact on the small businesses here. So to continue to respect and honor the small businesses by not implementing this anti-small-business wage and benefit law, you are stating that you respect and support the small businesses, and they will be grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hello. Hello. Hello, my name is Joan Lassand. I live at 622 Central Avenue. Lived here since 2004 with my husband, and we have three children. I'm actually here tonight on behalf of a doctor here in Willmet. His name is written here on the sheet, and I will read you what he says. "I am a small business storefront owner in Willmet. My business features myself and professional staff only. I would like to hire additional part-time help, but with current taxes, rent, and overhead, I cannot afford to do so. For the village to opt in to the Cook County Minimum Wage and Sick Leave Ordinance would put this possibility even further out of reach. I cannot speak openly about this because I fear retaliation against my business. I know others in our Willmet small business community who have experienced intimidation, backlash, and boycotting of their business when they spoke last time. But I wanted to share my views, and I will here through my friend and client, Joan Lassand." That's me. "I am dismayed to see so many of my small business peers already have to leave Willmet because the cost of doing business here is already high. And I know that so many more would have to follow suit if the village board reverses its position and opts in to the Cook County ordinances. Please trust me as a business owner to make good decisions for my business, my staff, and our community. Please do not allow a small group of people who do not share the burdens and rewards of my business to dictate to me how I should run my business." Thank you. And then on the condition of anonymity, the business owner and his staff have written their business, the address, and the phone number, and they said it's okay that I present it.
Well, if you give it to me, it's a public document. So you should, if you'd like anonymous, if you'd like to be anonymous, you should hold that. You should hold that document. No, no, but that document, once you hand it to me, is a public document, subject to public disclosure.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Joe Lunkis. I'm a Willmet resident since 1982. I won't go into a long history lesson, but we know about the Bill of Rights and Freedom that we enjoy: freedom of association and to make our own decisions. I think the examples that these two people just portrayed is of freedom. You know, they have a right, and they have their freedom of association where people can join the union to get to work. This young lady talks about her freedom, how she was in a low-wage job and was able to get a job now making tremendous income well above the minimum wage, I think was in her words. So I don't think that we need to mess with the invisible hand, allowing people and businesses to be able to make their own associations and arms-length arrangements. People are free to go and find employment that pays more than the minimum wage. The second thing I'd like to morph into, as a non-practicing CPA, I do do some tax return work for people. And I did one for a young mother, a single mother raising two children, making about $18,000. And the point is, is this whole minimum wage ordinance is framed in the context of nothing else. The reality is, there's a lot of safety nets that our society provides. She receives the earned income tax credit, the child tax credits. If she were to put her children in daycare, she'd get the childcare tax credits. She also gets supplemental nutritional assistance. The children get breakfast and lunch at school on the basis of that. She and the children also get Medicaid provided through it. So as much, I'm a caring person, but I think the arguments that are being advanced here is that this is the only restitution to help struggling people. And our society is very generous. We provide a lot of support to people. And I think it's incumbent to allow people to have the freedom to go and seek better employment, to get above minimum wage, to lift herself out of this and to provide for her child without having to get in between a private employer and a private person negotiating themselves in an arms-length free with no duress to have to work for someone to impose some sort of a standard on them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we're done with the first two rows. Third row, too? Or wait, one more for the third row. You haven't spoken yet, sir, right? And you wanted to.
Hi, my name is Chris Tritzus. I'm at 6197 Street in Willmet. I am a longtime resident of Willmet, as also our family are business owners. Dear Mr. President and Board of Trustees, I wanted to thank all of you for your time and dedication to keep Willmet competitive, prosperous, and strong for future generations. I know it is a sizable commitment to be a board member, and many are not always as commending of the sacrifice and the duties of being a board member, so I wanted to thank each and every one of you personally. What started as a simple and fundamental business policy has turned into a horrific and dangerous business environment from the sound and reasonable dialogue that needed to ensue. It is abundantly clear from the prior meeting, numerous people and businesses have been systematically targeted in a collective and coordinated effort to silence opposition. You cannot hide behind the amendment of freedom of speech while verbal and digital attacking businesses occur. As I started to ask around, I've had the sad experience to talk to many business owners that have been brutalized and scared to talk publicly for further retaliation and retribution of radical backlash. How is it reasonable to want to destroy local small business that is creating jobs and improving employees' careers and their lives to prosper? It makes no common sense. Forcing Willmet businesses to increase operating expenses while the majority of other communities in our region and state don't have the wage and benefit challenges defies common sense and reason. Many people and businesses have voiced their concern against Willmet joining the Cook County Ordinance before. In addition to Willmet voices, 109 of 132 communities, or 82.6% of the communities in Cook County, have already opted out. There are hundreds of reasons for and against this philosophical issue at hand. However, many issues we are really talking about are simple, easy, and clear to decide on. The board is already 100% correct at letting the state rule this issue and not allowing Cook County to dictate Willmet policy. We do not take offense to the one board member that was misdirected by some of the false narrative that has already been created, but we, the formerly silenced registered voting community that are significant, are now trying to remedy this. The only issue we are revoting on is solely to keep Willmet competitive in a really challenging environment. Forcing Willmet businesses to pay more will account to a Willmet tax on local businesses, this can only be solved at the state level. We need a level playing field for businesses, and you have correctly voted the first time, and we look forward to unanimous opting out again. This will be the future of Willmet if we don't. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Row Four. So, fourth row, anyone who would like to speak, please come up now. Welcome.
Hi, I'm John Powers. I'm a Willmet resident. I received this sponsored ad sent to me by the League of Women Voters of Willmet, encouraging me to support an increase in the minimum wage in Willmet. League of Women Voters of Willmet claims to be a nonpartisan organization. Might come as a surprise to have a nonpartisan group advocating for one side of a highly-charged political issue. It's not surprising to me, though, as I've watched the league take up almost exactly the same political positions as the Cook County Democrat Party on all kinds of issues: promoting Democrat candidates and protesting the election of Republican candidates. The League of Women Voters of Willmet is a very partisan political operation. It operates nearly in lockstep with the Democrat Party when campaigning for their positions. Of course, people are somewhat free to form groups and to politic all they want. That doesn't mean, however, that everyone else should have to pay to promote their positions. I'm bringing this up because the village gives special privileges to nonpartisan groups in organizing political information sessions, like debates. When we have a deeply partisan group like the League of Women Voters of Willmet claiming to be nonpartisan, to gain special access to the village, it's equivalent to the village identifying with a political party rather than the taxpayers and the voters of the village. There are various overlapping laws prohibiting the use of government funds to further a political campaign, as well as our own village ordinances, which prohibits the use of village facilities for partisan politics. We should adhere to our laws and not allow partisan politics to be officially sponsored by our village. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So we're done with Row Four, so I guess we're on Row Five then. Anybody in Row Five? Anybody? Okay, ma'am. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Fran Goldstein. I live at Lake and Ridge.
You're going to need to speak up. I just know they won't be able to hear you in the back.
My name is Fran Goldstein. I live at Lake and Ridge in Willmet. And I'm here to just add voice to the request for our elected officials to represent the majority of Willmet constituents and please provide livable wage and paid sick leave. A couple of the comments I'd just like to address is, one, is to have businesses say that they cannot hire or expand their business due to escalating costs. What about the health, safety, and dignity of the employee? And many of the survey respondents did say that they would be willing to pay an additional cost to the business in a retail or restaurant position to know that they were paying their employees a livable wage. Willmet is not a middle-class village. I hate to tell anybody that. The average home and pay scale here is way above that. And most people do not even think twice about paying more for any local business. They want to support their local businesses, and they're happy to do that. Second thing is, is I always find it hypocritical to say that there's government spending and government support for people who can supplement their minimum wage. All that is, is passing that on from the business to the local taxpayer. That's what our taxes go to, is providing food stamps, providing shelters, providing all kinds of support for people who can't afford to live today because they can't get a livable wage. So rather than passing that on and raising our taxes, why don't we all step up as consumers and make sure that the people that are in our neighborhoods and coming to Willmet to work are actually receiving a livable wage and paid sick leave? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so Row Six, anybody who'd like to speak, please come up. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm John Marshall. I live at 822 Prairie Avenue, and my family and I have been proud Willmet residents since 1994. I want to thank the village board and the finance committee for creating the working group, and applaud the working group volunteers and staff members, Mike Bremen and John Prejner, for their hard work. The report they've produced should be a role model for other suburbs. To help answer the question of what impact the ordinances might have on our businesses, which we all care about, Mike Bremen tried valiantly to get data on what has happened to the economies of our North Shore neighbors since the higher minimum wage and paid sick leave took effect in their communities. Unfortunately, they didn't cooperate with the intergovernmental effort. As a private citizen, however, I was able to try a different approach: Freedom of Information Act requests. I asked how many businesses opened and how many businesses closed in those communities between July 1st, when the laws took effect, and this March 31st. I've detailed the responses and letters I sent you all this weekend. Some of the highlights were, in Evanston, 59 new businesses started in those nine months, including 23 food establishments, compared with 33 lost during a longer 15-month period. Net gain, 26 businesses. Skokie had 97 new businesses, 13 of them restaurants. They unfortunately wouldn't tell how many businesses they have closed. They said they didn't keep that record. Glenco opened six new businesses while four closed during that period. Net gain, two businesses. Weneka opened six businesses and lost five. Net gain of one business. That's 167 new businesses in the nine-month period for our North Shore neighbors who are complying with the ordinances. Clearly, the minimum wage and sick leave laws aren't scaring businesses away. In fact, more of them are coming. This shouldn't surprise us. Nationally, employment increased 2/3 of the 22 times the federal minimum wage went up. As the working group report shows, in Chicago, which adopted similar ordinances in 2014, employment actually has done better with the nearby suburbs that haven't had the ordinances. I expect Willmet's economy can do just as well when we pass higher minimum wage and paid sick leave. It's what the community wants, and we'll keep supporting our businesses with pride. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we're through, you're in the last row of the yellow seats, right? So let's take the first, well, the first two rows of the blue seats. Who'd like to speak? Okay, the first two rows of the blue seats, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Barry Bennett. I live on Brookside Drive. Children grew up here. We're very happy living here. Appreciate the chance to speak to you. We've heard presentations already about the other communities that seem to be doing just fine, having opted in or chosen not to opt out. There are costs. I recognize there are costs, and I recognize the small business people incur costs and have a hard way to go. But there are costs to all kinds of things. There are always going to be costs. When we established child labor laws, there were costs, and there were businesses that employed children. Remember those pictures in the coal mines with the little breaker boys with the smudges on their faces? And that cost, that hurt some businesses who relied on them. But society decided, no, we're not going to tolerate certain things. We're going to require other things. There are costs to saying that you're not allowed just to dump your trash out into the alley. It might be easier. It might be cheaper to do that, at least in the short run. But those are costs, and businesses face costs. We've heard the information that the previous speaker gave about the impact actually on businesses in the several surrounding communities that have not opted out, and it seems that they're prospering, they're doing well, and not they're prospering, they're doing well, and not a situation where all of those businesses collapsed. Let's focus, though, for a minute on who this benefits. Yes, it may benefit the whole community because we feel better. Certainly, the health law, the sick leave, is potentially beneficial to everybody's health. But what are we talking about with the minimum wage? We're talking about the working poor, all right? Some of whom live in Willmet, others of whom come from other areas to work in Willmet. The working poor. These people, thank you, these people struggle very hard to live. The $1.75 that went from $8.25 to $10 makes a huge difference in their lives. Help them, do something for them. This community can afford it. I'm sorry if the businesses will be hurt. I think most of us can afford to pay a little bit more when we shop, when we go to restaurants. But think for a moment while you're doing this about the people whose lives will be substantially changed by earning another $1.75 an hour. Those are the working poor, they work, help them out with this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hi. Am I okay? Talking there? I'm Julie Yousum. I'm the Executive Director of the Willmet Kenilworth Chamber of Commerce, and I did submit a letter that you have all received in your packet, so in the interest of time, I'll just read some brief remarks. I am here to speak on behalf of business owners who are reluctant to publicly come forward to voice their opposition due to the bullying, threats, and boycotting that occurred after the June 2017 meeting when the trustees voted to opt out of the ordinances. The Chamber thanks the members of the Minimum Wage Paid Sick Leave Working Group for the considerable time and effort they invested in compiling the final report for the Village Board. We ask that the trustees remember that Willmet businesses are the primary group that stands to be negatively affected by your decision, and that a majority of Willmet businesses oppose both ordinances. We would also like to remind the trustees that more than 80% of Cook County's 132 municipalities have opted out of both ordinances. We reiterate the findings of the Working Group's business survey, which showed that the majority of Willmet businesses responding oppose both the minimum wage and paid sick leave ordinances by a wide margin. A majority of our businesses believe they would have to raise prices in order to comply with a mandatory minimum wage increase and mandatory paid leave, and that providing and tracking paid leave for full and part-time employees will cause a significant financial hardship for the majority of respondents. In conclusion, we encourage you to let the result of the Working Group's business survey speak for itself. Please adhere to your original decision to opt out of both ordinances and let this matter be settled most fairly and where it belongs at the state level. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, my name's Laura Salee. 25-year resident of Willmet, also a Willmet small business owner. I ask that the Board remains opted out in Willmet to the minimum wage. I want to confirm the fact that I personally, as well as my husband, have been approached by people on the opposition side confronting us for our views. I find it very disturbing that our village has become so divided in this area. I almost was not going to speak tonight because I continue to feel like I'm putting myself out there for further retaliation, but I think that it needs to be understood that a small business is a tough thing to do. And these small increases may be a dollar or two an hour, but when you add the extra Social Security and unemployment taxes, I run our payroll, I know what it costs to run our payroll. I also know that it's not just the dollar and a quarter extra, it's the extra Social Security and unemployment taxes that get added on to that dollar and a quarter. I have ads needed, nurses I hire who have other full-time jobs and are receiving benefits at those jobs that want to come to my office and make more money, help me out when I need it, and they make more money. I'm not going to be able to hire those people anymore because I'm not going to take the time and effort to calculate sick time for someone who has another full-time job because nurses have that luxury of working three, 12 hours a week and filling in another day a week. That's just the nature of my business. I find it disturbing that our village or our government knows how to run my business. You don't know how to run my business. Nobody knows how to run the individual business, and the small business owners do the best they can with what they have, and I just sincerely ask that you think about it because, again, the vast majority of the small business owners in this community have been very oppressed by this whole process and are not speaking up any longer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so, I think there are two or three rows left in the back on the blue. We'll take everybody, everybody in the blue there, the blue chairs, is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Right side, my right, blue chairs. Okay, so, we're going to move to the left side, wait, please. Welcome, sir.
I'm Charlie Gross. I've lived in Willmet since 1988. I encourage you to opt in. People have been complaining about bullies. I think that people who pay people a late and a quarter an hour are bullies.
Do I have to? All right. Back two rows, left side, blue chairs. Anybody who'd like to speak, please come up.
Hey, guys, I am Dr. Cheryl Axelrod. I'm a Willmet resident, practicing OBGYN physician. I'm a business owner. I don't work for a hospital system, I work for myself, practicing physician and a human being, and I absolutely support a living wage and paid sick leave. We know that Willmet residents support that as well. There was an entire election and a referendum based on that, and 75% of Willmet residents supported the paid sick leave and the living wage. We also know from this survey scientifically conducted by a corporation or a company who does this, that this is their thing to do, that the majority of Willmet residents support these two ordinances. We've heard a lot from small businesses who say this will be too hard, this is unfair. You know what? I'm a business owner. You figure things out. Your costs go up, and I have to say, my input, I can't raise my prices. I make what the insurance companies want to pay me, and I still think this is really important because it's absolutely important for public health. We know what happens when the people at Starbucks and the people at Jewel are sick and they come to work. We get sick. And I know what happens to my patients when their employers don't let them out of work to come see me because that's too hard for them. We have to look at the greater good, and not just at what the business community thinks because, you know, they're businesses, and that's really important, but the whole village thinks. The whole village, on average, the majority of Willmet thinks that this is something that's very important, and we can figure it out. The sick time is an Excel spreadsheet. It's really not that hard. And I'm a business, this is what we have to do, guys, and this majority of Willmet residents supports it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Jeff Axelrod. I'll keep it brief, I hadn't planned to talk, but the people have spoken overwhelmingly in two referendums. I heard some on this board. I heard some on this board question the validity of the almost 10,000 residents who voted for paid sick time and the over 7,500 voters who voted in favor of a higher minimum wage. Now, I'm hearing questioning of the telephone survey. What else do you need? We live in a democracy. Democracy is the will of the people. Will Willmet practice democracy. Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening. My name's John Hazer, resident of Willmet, business owner in Willmet, and also I happen to be on the working board. But I just want to let you know, we are recently located in Willmet with our business. We moved in our business in July of 2017. We compete on a national level. We're a small company, and we not only compete against other companies in Chicago, but also throughout the remainder of the United States. One of the things that we do, the first lady that spoke talked about, she wants to be given that opportunity to be pulled up from her bootstraps. We want to be able to provide a boot for her to pull up. As we compete, we oftentimes take risks as a business owner and hire people with no experience in the field that we currently operate in, and with the understanding that within six to nine months, they're going to have a salary increase as well as other benefits that would be increased. But it's understood that perhaps it's not a good fit for them, so we try to give them that opportunity. By having a lower wage and the fact that we're competing against firms from Arizona, New Mexico, Vermont, and others, it makes it a little bit more difficult. When I was on the working board, we did ask specifically, are we dealing with a living wage or a minimum wage? And we were assured that it was dealing with the question of minimum wage. So, I just bring that to your attention. And with regards to a lot of the surveys, we really did try to focus on what affects Willmet. The citizens of Willmet, those that are employed in Willmet, and yes, we did try to seek out other constituents in other cities or villages, but we really did focus specifically on Willmet. So, thank you very much, and I would encourage you to continue to be opted out of the Cook County current law. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
My name is Mark Levy. I've been a Willmet resident since 1979. Listening to the people talk, I just wanted to make one clarification. Sometimes it's presented as if, is the government going to come in and regulate business, or is the small business owner going to be free to do what they want? Well, they're not free to do what they want. We have the regulation, we have a minimum wage. We're just talking about raising it, not creating it. So, all the business owners that spoke are operating within the context of a minimum wage, they can't go below. That minimum wage has not been raised in over 20 years, and I think it's fair to the workers to raise that minimum wage. I don't think it's going to hurt the businesses, I think John spoke to that, and I'm very much in favor of raising the minimum wage and the sick leave. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I hope you know you're cutting in front of line, so, yeah, I know, I know you showed up late, but that's okay. I just want you to know, so, okay, no problem. Let me finish the blue chairs and then I'll come, we're going in order. So, yeah, your row spoke like 40 minutes ago, so, all right, so, I mean, he's an elected official, so I can have, yeah, you can come up with the next group, so, there you go. There you go. Go ahead. Welcome, good to see you again.
Thank you for having me, and thanks for the warm welcome. Thanks, members of the Village Board, again. I apologize that I was late. My name's Michael Cavan, R.J. I'm a Willmet resident. I'm a parent of two kids here in Willmet, one at High Crest and one at Willmet Junior High. I'm a board member of the D-39 Education Foundation. Little plug, the Pub Crawl is Thursday night, so encourage everybody here to join us on the Pub Crawl. Also, I'm the Chair of the Cook County Board of Review. I want to thank you all for taking the time to discuss the county's minimum wage and the paid sick leave ordinances. As you know, it's a matter of great concern to many residents. I know it's already been said, but I want to echo it as well. I also want to commend the Village Board and the Finance Committee for forming the working group, and applaud Chairman Jacoby, the other working group volunteers, and the staff members, Mike Bremen and John Prejner, for their efforts. The working group and the staff did a deep and thorough dive into the subject, analyzed volumes of scientific studies, engaged in an open and lively discussion, and delivered a well-resourced and sourced working group report. I attended four of the seven meetings in person and read the final report and the studies that it cites, and I concur that Willmet's working group should serve as a model for other municipalities. From the working group report, we know that, as has been discussed here tonight, I believe, there are over 1,300 low-wage workers in Willmet, and 250 of them live in the village. An estimated 70, 80% are working families, and again, it's a sourced report, this is on page seven of the report. Opting back into the ordinances would mean a significant improvement in the lives of these workers and their families. The increases in the minimum wage provided by the ordinance would get us close to a living wage for a single adult by 2020, as seen on page 12 of the report. Now, I understand we're all balancing the concerns for workers with our concern for our local businesses. As a regular customer at Valley Lodge, Nix, The Rock House, Chalet, Redfield Grill, Deep On The Web on the Bike Shop, and many others, I share your concern. I love shopping and eating at these wonderful businesses because of their great products and great service, and I want them and Willmet's economy to continue to succeed and thrive. And as has been discussed, fortunately, the working group report contains the datas and the studies to ease these concerns. The two meta-studies on the employment impact of higher minimum wages have been peer-reviewed, meaning they have undergone the highest level of scrutiny by other scholars, and they show little to no impact on employment levels. As has been discussed as well closer to home, we see that Chicago had similar growth as its neighboring Cook County suburbs for the first year after Chicago implemented its similar minimum wage and sick leave ordinances in 2015, and for the second year after Chicago's ordinances were in effect, it actually enjoyed higher employment growth than Cook County suburbs, none of which had yet passed these ordinances. I know Mike Bremen has tried valiantly to get data on business openings and closings from Evanston, Glencoe, Skokie, and Winnetka, and as I believe we've already talked about tonight, the FOIA request each of these governments, plus the information on the working group report, show that there has been no harmful impact on the business climate in Chicago, Evanston, Glencoe, Skokie, or Winnetka since the minimum wage and sick leave ordinances went into effect in these communities. In fact, they appear to be doing just fine when it comes to attracting and retaining businesses. This local trend is consistent with what most studies that have gone through the peer-review process have shown nationally. Once again, I appreciate the time the trustees are dedicating to this issue, and I'd like to thank the working group for all of its work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being a good sport, too. Okay, so, we're back in the, my left, the blue chairs, how many people are left in the blue chairs that haven't spoken that want to speak? Okay, there's four or five, all of you guys can come up if that's okay. And then we'll move to the yellow chairs. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Sue Lulbach. I work at Connections for the Homeless in Evanston and head up a coalition called Joining Forces for Affordable Housing. Sorry? Oh, I live in Chicago. I'd like to speak tonight in favor of opting in to the minimum wage increases, and I'd like to say that Connections for the Homeless sees the relationship between low wages and housing cost burden every day, and we often serve people from Willmet who have become homeless or are about to lose their homes. Today, I sent you a link to a report by the Natalie P. Voorhees Center for Neighborhood and Community Improvement at UIC. The report is called "The Impact of a Minimum Wage Increase on Housing Affordability in Illinois." I did this because I didn't see in the research for tonight any discussion of the relation between wages and housing. One conclusion of this report is that the need for a minimum wage increase is greatest in high-cost-of-living regions with high housing costs. We know from working with Willmet residents in need that higher minimum wages are crucial to ensuring that every family in Willmet can afford their housing and still have enough left over to thrive. Voting for the opt-in tonight, well, you won't be doing it tonight, but supporting the opt-in will be a great way to keep the affordable housing fight going after the momentum that your vote in favor of Cleveland Place created. Wage issues are regional, as are housing issues, and we believe that Willmet should be at the head of the pack in making this change that's needed so desperately across our region. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Hi, my name is Anne Sullivan, and I live at 510 Lake Avenue in Willmet. I'm speaking tonight in support of the ordinances. As a resident who attended many of the working group meetings, I would like to thank the working group for following a thoughtful and unbiased process to select the data included in tonight's report. I also want to thank the trustees for creating a process to study the local impact of the ordinances. ordinances when you felt that you did not have enough information to allow the ordinance to go into effect. I read a lot of the emails that people were sending in response to the report tonight, and I thought that it might be helpful for residents who did not attend the working group meetings. I thought that they might have questions about the data because they didn't take the opportunity to watch the group's work as it was in progress. Mr. Jacoby, the working group members, and the village staff gave thoughtful consideration to resident comments, were vigilant in their efforts to avoid bias, and made considerable effort to review data from as many sources as were available. Their process for evaluating research reports also ensured that the most reliable studies were included in the report. Residents who did not participate in the process may not be aware that everyone who attended a meeting was welcome to raise concerns and offer suggestions as the group went about its work. We should all feel confident that the report represents the best, most valid data on the topics of minimum wage and paid sick leave. It's now up to the trustees to act upon this information and reverse the opt-out decision. This is not the opinion of a small but vocal group of residents. The best peer-reviewed studies show that little to no detrimental effect on local businesses or on the availability of jobs for hourly workers when minimum wage is increased. Further, the survey conducted among a representative sample of residents by a reputable national polling company shows that 2/3 of us support enacting both ordinances. As trustees, you are asked to carefully consider the interests of all stakeholders, the residents, the business owners, and the workers. The working group's report demonstrates that enacting these ordinances is in the best interest of all the constituencies, but most importantly, the 1,371 low-wage earners working here in Willmet to support themselves and often their families on a pre-tax annual income of $17,160. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Kate Chaya, and I live at 3.
Can you hear me?
Okay, sorry.
I can hear you, but I guarantee you the rest of the people can't.
Okay. My name is Kate Chaya, and I live at 325 Central Avenue in Willmet. I am co-president of the aforementioned League of Women Voters, and tonight I am speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters. And before I get to my prepared comments, I feel too compelled to correct the record. Nonpartisan is not the same, nonpolitical is not the same as nonpartisan. The League of Women Voters advocates for all kinds of issues based on our national positions. We do not ever, ever support or oppose a candidate of any party. Members of the League of Women Voters attended all of the meetings of the working group and provided feedback throughout the process. The working group process was thorough, transparent, and thoughtful, and we thank Chair Jacoby, the members of the group, and the village staff for the good governance that was demonstrated through the process. This process and product are a model of good governance for other communities. The report is a thoughtful consideration of the data relevant to the matters at hand. The working group established a framework for investigation and set high standards to omit bias, to exclude speculation, and to avoid anecdotes as evidence. There has been a lot of focus on the resident survey, but peer-reviewed studies and other data provided need to be given equal weight. The report of the working group clearly points in the direction of opting back into the ordinances. From the peer-reviewed studies examined and included to the two surveys that were done, a careful read of the report leads to no other conclusion than to vote to opt in. The League of Women Voters believes in good process and in good governance. Since June, the village board has undertaken a strong and responsible process. Now, good governance would dictate that the board follow the results of that process and respond to the clearly stated opinion of its residents with a vote to allow the Cook County ordinances to go back into effect in this village.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Diana Hackparth. I live at 2002 Beechwood in Willmet, and I was also privileged to attend many of the working group meetings, and I would absolutely echo what other people have said. Those were very open, very responsible meetings, and I think the report is excellent. I'm just going to speak briefly about the paid sick leave ordinance. I did because I'm in public health, and those of us in public health don't think that regulation is necessarily a bad thing. I was so pleased to cross the street in front of a stoplight today so that I didn't get hit by a car, and, you know, and I'm glad I can drink clean water and that restaurants are regulated and we have clean food. So I think that sensible regulation is an okay thing. I did try, I did a very extensive literature review beyond what was in the report, looking at paid sick leave, to see if I could find any study that said anything that was detrimental about having paid sick leave. All the studies that are there, and there's not a whole lot, but that are there, talk about families being able to attend, people who have sick children being able to attend to their sick children at home. They talk about families having the ability to take an elderly person to the doctor. They talk about that people who have paid sick leave are much more likely to get screening for cancer. People who have paid sick leave are not afraid of losing a day's pay when they go to the doctor, and they're not afraid of perhaps losing their job. The other part that I looked in the public health literature was the whole issue about staying home when ill, and there's lots of stuff which I don't want to, which is very, very compelling about the amount of illness that can occur, contagion, when people who are sick and come to work. So I just, just very briefly, there is, all the public health evidence would say that paid sick leave is good for public health, it's good for the families that have paid sick leave, it's good for the community, and there is evidence that it's good for businesses because people who have paid sick leave are much more likely to be loyal to the business and to stay, so you have less job turnover. So I guess in conclusion, I would say as a public health person, mandating paid sick leave makes absolutely perfect sense. It goes along with many, many other public health regulations, and it's something that every family deserves, the opportunity to take care of their children when they're sick, not just the people who are higher-wage workers. So I absolutely support paid sick leave. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Allison Hout, and I live at 523 Maple Avenue. I am co-president of the League of Women Voters of Willmet, and tonight I am speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Willmet. I would like to note that I agree with everything that my co-president said previously, and I would like to add the following. I begin with the words of our village president, stated at the beginning of each village board meeting. "We are a community of neighbors. As neighbors, we have a responsibility to engage in civil discourse and to respect each other's opinions. The League of Women Voters of Willmet believes that this community of neighbors shares the same goal, a strong, vibrant, and welcoming Willmet. All of us are partners in what makes this community the place where we want to live, work, play, shop, and dine. Willmet residents spend our money and our time here in Willmet because we love and respect our local businesses. Willmet residents enjoy seeing the owners and workers that we know, we enjoy meeting our neighbors and seeing our friends in these businesses. We expect that we will all continue to do just that. These two Cook County ordinances benefit everyone in our community, business owners, workers, residents of Willmet, people who come to shop and dine here. Paying people a living wage and allowing these people to earn paid sick time, those values are consistent with and represent the values of our community. They represent the values of our residents, of our workers, of the people who choose to shop here, and who choose to own businesses here. Given that many of our businesses in Willmet are already meeting these standards, these ordinances simply protect what we all stand for, and they set a standard for those who choose to join us here in the future. Employment is the means to meet basic needs of individuals and families in providing childcare, transportation, housing, and other daily needs. Yet for many, the wages received for full-time work leave them in poverty. The League of Women Voters' policies are based on a process of study and research which adheres to strict standards. The League of Women Voters of the United States Position on Meeting Basic Human Needs states that we support programs and policies to prevent or reduce poverty and to promote self-sufficiency for individuals and families, to allow individuals to earn sufficient wages to care for their basic food, shelter, and healthcare needs. We urge the village to do the same and support these ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Emily Hayden, and I'm a Willmet resident, and I wanted to thank you all for having this forum tonight and having the opportunity to listen to so many eloquent and very well-informed people from the different sides. And it's so great to live in a village like Willmet where we care so much about our community and each other. On that note, I'm probably one of the less well-informed and less articulate people you'll have tonight, but however, I still wanted to state that it's important to hear people like me who are just Willmet residents and Willmet shoppers. I love Willmet. I love the Willmet downtown. We shop there all the time. My husband, most fabulous man in the world, buys me flowers on a regular basis from Morning Glory. Unbeknownst to him, he's buying me an anniversary gift from Lambrec Jeweler, and we'll talk about that later when he gets the bill. We dine regularly at the restaurants you've alluded to. We go to Homers. We take our dog to Fabulous Booty and the Beast, and I could go on and on. I'm a big fan of Willmet business. I'm also a big fan of opting in because I respect the businesses so much. I know how great they are to the employees, the ones who wait on me, who take the time, who listen to me, who also offer great prices. Latin Lassie is another place where I just bought a fabulous gift for a friend who just became a new grandmother, and she was so thrilled to get it. So I really feel like I've heard some talk about people feeling like people aren't shopping at their businesses. Well, I go to businesses. I don't care who you are. I, the North Shore Butcher, all kinds of places. I go to businesses all the time. We spend our money. We have a wonderful time. We take our children. We take our friends. And I think Willmet's an incredible place. We have fabulous businesses. I will continue to support each and every business that I possibly can, and I'm a big fan of opting in for this minimum wage, for the sick leave. I think it's really important for our district, for our Willmet businesses, and for our community. And again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we're on the yellow chairs now, on my left. How about the first, the last two rows? Who'd like to speak in the last two rows? Okay, come on up, please. Welcome.
Hello, thank you. My name is Stacy Worley, and I've been a Willmet resident for about 12 years. Just a comment from the earlier vote, President Polinski, that you did. Another good question, I think, would just be to ask how many of those votes, how many people are Willmet residents? Just maybe to help further with the data. I do think, I mean, I've heard a lot of good debate. I know I've glanced at the wonderful report, the 436 pages. I do think we could debate all day long whether to opt in or opt out of the minimum wage and the sick leave policies, the increase. I do believe in general, the residents here in Willmet want an increase in the minimum wage, hence the results from the survey. I was one that voted in 2014 for the increase in the minimum wage to $10. I absolutely support that. But I would not vote to opt in for the policy tonight because it's not, it's not the same. It's a totally different policy with the dollar increase, and then it's tied to CPI. Just a couple of thoughts and questions. Historically, regarding what does government typically do to address minimum wage issues? Is it typically at the state? I think it is. Why is Cook County getting involved all of a sudden? And the proposed annual incremental increases that I just mentioned, this dollar increase every year and then tied to CPI, are unprecedented. This is not a mandate. This is a suggestion by, put forth by Cook County government, and we don't have to follow it. And then I just have a comment about the signage, the signs that went up early on after, I was here at the first meeting back in June and stayed till the bitter end. It said, "The village trustees voted no to $10 an hour." Those signs are grossly misleading, and in my opinion, they have no place in our community. I'm all about healthy debate and listening to everybody's opinion. But if they're not misleading, like certain people think, a vocal minority likes to say, then why don't we see more of them around the village? I'm carpooling my children. I've seen maybe 15, call it 30 signs over the last few months. If so many people are on board with this mandate, why aren't there more signs? I encourage you to opt out. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ashley Katz. I live at 923 Cornell Street. I have three children, and my husband and I both work. I'm self-employed. Part of the reason I probably haven't been as on top of this issue as I wish I had been, my background is in research and analytics, retail, former retail analyst. I can tell you, from listening to this today, I would love to be able to come up here and say, yes, I support it. It's morally, probably makes a lot of people feel really good. I don't support it because I believe that, and I want to back up and applaud you all because too many times, government does exactly what is politically convenient to do, and we end up with bigger problems down the road as a result. The fact that you are standing here today and have opposed this and are now having to take this government time and money to once again rehash and renegotiate the issue is a problem. I look around the retail establishments in this town. I don't know why they all are trying to hire people and can't find people for the jobs. I look to parents of Willmet, and I say, half the reason we have this problem is because we're not pushing our children to get a job, to get a, have a solid work ethic. We're instead spending money, sending them after sports programs, sports program, sports program, I'm guilty of it myself, rather than filling these jobs, these retail jobs, with kids who should have them and should be filling them. They're not meant to be living jobs or jobs that provide a living wage. They never were intended for that. The retailers' margins won't support that. We can make a decision to do what feels good today and pay the price longer term. I don't know how many of you have already seen, but as recently as yesterday, the Cook County is, the Fed Economist is trying to say that we're going to raise all of our property taxes 40% for the next 30 years. I will be leaving this town. I moved here 12 years ago. I moved here 12 years ago, went from New York. There were no retail establishments in this town. My husband and I walked around. We couldn't understand it. And I applaud the board and boards that have come before you that have worked very hard to bring retail to this town. It's not easy, and we're shooting ourselves in the foot to take care of people today. And as a research analyst, I can tell you, you can find studies that will tell you whatever you want to find. It's the question of how valid and how credible those sources are. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lolly Watt. I live at 811 Chilton Lane, and I opted into Willmet back in 1994. Each of us makes choices every single day. The business owners have talked very compellingly about they know how to run their businesses, and they do. We, as residents, make choices every day about how we choose to run our lives. And I do know that I fully support government programs like SNAP and Medicare and Medicaid. But I also know that I would rather that people who are employed do not have to avail themselves of government subsidies because I feel that as a taxpayer, I'm being asked to subsidize their business. I would rather choose to go to their business and spend money and buy their product and pay a fair amount for that product than subsidize them through the back door because their working employees need to avail themselves of government subsidies, and I think that is totally unfair to us. Also, I really applaud what Mr. Jacoby said at the beginning about the 300 residents were selected for the sample because it was a statistically valid sample, and the 40% of businesses who responded are not a statistically valid sample because they self-chose to respond to a survey. So if you want to talk apples and apples, maybe you need to put something out there that those of us who want to can respond to, rather than those of us who got a call. I didn't get a call. I didn't get to respond to the survey. And this is a really highly educated community, and it is important that we base our decisions based on facts and not anecdotes. So the 300-person resident survey is more statistically significant and should be given greater credence than the 40% of businesses. greater credence than the 40% of businesses who responded. Thank you for representing the interests of us residents. Thank you for representing our values. And thank you for making the right decision and opting back in.
Thank you. Okay, so we did the back two rows of the yellow, right? So let's go two more rows forward. Who in the next two rows want to speak? Yes, it's your row, too. Okay, so the three there, not the first two rows yet, even though it's really just one row because I don't think either Mr. Praesner or Ms. Routler are planning to address the board tonight. Okay, so, well, on the yellow side, who hasn't spoken that wants to speak? All right, so the first, the back three first, and then the front three, and then we'll be done. So. You're the back three, yes. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Betsy Hart. I'm a resident of Wilmette. When I arrived here this evening, early in front of the building, my colleagues and I had decided the two of us would join the assemblage on the public property to quietly voice with a sign our belief that we should not opt into the Cook County decision. Alexandra Eisenberg was very gracious and suggested that we were, it was fine for us to be there and to be showing our signs. Unfortunately, the rest of the group jostled, tried to cover our signs, and even called the police. The police officer was very gracious and said that we had every right to be there. The group actually called more attention to us in their behavior than they would have if we were allowed to stand quietly. I bring that up because we created, we did this experiment to show what many others have already alluded to, that in fact, there has been bullying of businesses for speaking their minds on this issue. We are extremely concerned about that. But you know, bullying comes in many forms, and the idea that, that businesses, as they have been portrayed tonight, the idea that without laws, they would dump garbage on front lawns, put children into coal mines, I'm surprised we didn't hear them argue that without a law, they would march into a home to snatch a nursing child from her mother's breast in order for her to turn up at the Starbucks and make a latte. Small business owners are heroes. They are dedicated. They want their employees to thrive. It's not only in their interest, but it's why they open businesses in Wilmette instead of downtown. People don't open businesses here to get rich. They'd open it for a variety of other reasons. And the idea that we would bully and suggest that these people are so horrible that without laws, they won't do the right thing is just the worst bullying of all. In fact, I did also speak to two commercial real estate agents who said that there's no question that, in their minds, that raising the minimum wage would have devastating consequences for the local businesses who are already have so much competition from, from Old Orchard Mall and Amazon and everything else. These businesses, these, these commercial real estate people, these experts, of course, were not polled in the recent survey. And you know, in a very real sense, a survey of how people feel about people getting paid a lot of money is not very helpful. What if the business owners were surveyed as to whether or not they felt that they should have a right to the money here of the people who are advocating that they raise the minimum wage? That, of course, would not be appropriate, even for those who say that we should, that majority rules. I do have an idea. We have lots of empty businesses and storefronts. I would suggest that those in favor of raising the minimum wage in this town, put their time and energy and resources into starting a business. There's lots of vacant storefronts. They can pay $13 an hour, or $25, or $100. Put in the mandated sick leave and policy benefits. They are free to do it and to be entrepreneurs, but they should not be free to tell other people how to run their businesses.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Ted Dobrowski, and I'm a Wilmette resident. I live on Oakwood Avenue. I'm also a small business owner located here in Wilmette. In my day job, what I do is I try to promote policies that will fix Illinois from the mess that we're in as a state. And you can imagine, that's a pretty tough task. And as I travel, I travel around this state, one of the goals I have is the same goals that I think every one of us here have. We'd like to see people earn more money. We'd like to have more jobs in Illinois. We'd like our state to be thriving and vibrant like it was when my parents immigrated here, you know, 60 years ago. But right now, it's not. And I think what we need is the, I think there's a disconnect in this room between mandates and what's happening in our state. If there's a state that loves mandates, it's Illinois. And I think as a board, you all know that. You're mandated to do the pension costs, the pension benefits. You have no choice about what pension benefits you pay. You have no choice on prevailing wages. You have to pay those prevailing wages. Collective bargaining, you guys have to do the collective bargaining costs. You have no choice. And we see what it's doing to cities across the state. We're privileged that we're in Wilmette, but if you go around Harvey, if you go to Danville, if you go to Rockford, they're all doing very poorly. And people are losing jobs. People's incomes are stagnant. It's a really tough time in Illinois. So I say all this because you all understand the mandates and what's happening and how much it limits your ability to manage a city. I want us to think about what Illinois has done to its economy, what Cook County has done to its economy, what Chicago's done to its economy. Right now, Chicago, or right now nationally, we have the lowest black unemployment rate ever in the nation's history. Chicago has the highest black unemployment rate in the nation. You know, they have a hard time taking care of the people that we're all trying to talk about taking care of with higher wages. We have to do better than what Chicago and Cook County is doing. We shouldn't be taking our lead on mandates from Cook County and Chicago. What we need to do is think about what these mandates, you know, you have to put yourself down the shoes of the business owners. They are the job creators. We have not talked about businesses today as job creators. They are the ones that are paying wages. They're the ones that are creating jobs. If this board chooses to mandate more things, more costs on businesses, it makes things a little tougher. I just want to point out two other things we have to remember. Somebody else mentioned that if and when a recession comes up, that means people will lose their jobs eventually, so we have to be careful with that. And the last point I would make is, the minimum wage for people who lose their jobs because businesses have to cut is zero. And so we have to be careful for those people who do lose their jobs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Tracy Kearney. I'm here as a member of the Wilmette Chamber and someone who practices business, who practices business in this community. My comments are actually short. Wasn't planning to talk, but something's driving me crazy. It's been driving me crazy since June, when this came up. I just want to set the record straight on the numbers here that are being talked about as far as how many Wilmette residents voted for this ordinance. Wilmette residents were never asked this question. Let me tell you what did happen. In, what was it, 2014, the referendum was put on the ballot. The question that was asked, there was an advisory question asked on the November 24, 2014 ballot that read, "Shall the minimum wage in Illinois for adults over the age of 18 be raised by $10 an hour by January of 2015, 1st of 2015?" There was also an advisory question on the November 16 ballot that read, "Shall Illinois enact the Earned Sick Time for Employees Act, which will allow Illinois workers to earn up to 40 hours of sick time a year to take, take care of their own health and their members' health?" What's been false, on June 27th, which is when this all began, and it's been repeated tonight, I keep waiting for the correction on it. On June 27th, four days before the law became effective, the village approved, this is a false, sorry, I don't know where I am. Here's what's false. It was, it's been noted that you approved an ordinance created specifically for Wilmette to bypass the new benefits, despite nearly 70% of our residents voting in favor of the $10 minimum wage and earned sick leave. Here's what did happen. One, the village approved a local ordinance allowing Wilmette to opt out of a Cook County ordinance that raised the minimum wage from $8.25 to $10 per hour, July 1, 17, then $1 annually until it reaches $13 in 2020, and then by, sorry, I lost my place again. In perpetuity thereafter, by CPI. That's not what anyone voted for in referendum. I checked the yes box for raising the minimum wage across Illinois. So, and additionally, when we say that 70% of Wilmette residents were behind this, that's also not true. 70%, I'll give you the numbers of, here's who voted.
30 seconds.
I got it. Lost my place again. Here we go. Anyway, the point is, 70% of Wilmette voters didn't do this, or Wilmette residents did not opt in for this. 70% of Wilmette voters did. Population then was 27,000 in Wilmette, 11,000 voted. Bottom line, when you do the math, 41.2% of Wilmette residents said they were for something they've never been asked for, and that's not what we're talking about today. I just want to correct that record. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we've got the last three. You guys can decide who goes first.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Mead. Thanks for having me here today. And I work at Panera Bread. I've been at four different ones across the coast to coast.
And you live in Wilmette, or where do you, you live in Wilmette? Okay.
I work in Wilmette. And to conflate these two issues, first and foremost, I think, is a disservice to both of them, the sick leave and the minimum wage. I think if you were to look at them separately, that would probably help out. Second of all, the Food Safety Service mandate for Illinois says that if I'm sick, I must have a doctor's note to return. So to say that I would come into work and endanger any of my customers or any of my fellow employees is, been insulting. Next, we have the local community, and the patrons are the ones that are paying the bills. So where is this money going? Well, it's going a little bit to the labor cost. And where, who deserves this money? There's two types of laborers, unskilled laborers, the new and the young, the consistent, the older and accomplished. Raising minimum wage for the new and the young does not help our laborers because the more loyal employees doesn't, it doesn't help them because they have nowhere to go. I can't get a raise if the guy I'm training is getting paid 50 cents less than me, and I've worked there for eight years. So it's a, this whole system is, is kind of topsy-turvy. So I guess the question is, you know, how do you want to help to shape the direction and the quality of unskilled labors in Wilmette? And that would go to say that the lower the minimum wage, the higher the raises can be, and the better skilled workers that you can have, that are loyal to their, to their company. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Oh, you're definitely going to have to lean into the microphone.
All right, I will. My name is, how's that?
That's better, yes.
My name is Beth Feeley. I am a resident of Wilmette, both as a child and as an adult. So first, I want to thank you all for your thoughtful and very thorough consideration on this issue of whether or not to adopt Cook County's minimum wage hike and paid sick leave ordinance that 82.5% roughly of Cook County municipalities have opted out of. I know a lot of time and energy has gone into this, studying this issue by both the board and the working group. I speak tonight to ask you to maintain your decision to opt out of this Cook County ordinance and stand with your original decision to allow Wilmette businesses who generate jobs and taxes in the community to run their businesses, which are at the heart of our great village. I think we all want to maximize people's opportunities to work and gain skills. Minimum wage jobs are crucial in this regard. I remember my first minimum wage job at a food shop. That's where I learned how to show up on time, handle money, serve people, adhere to food safety regulations, and perhaps most importantly, about the value and satisfaction of earning a paycheck. Many people need these minimum wage jobs, and we need policies that create an environment where there will be more of them, not fewer. Basic economics tells us that economic growth, which happens when businesses are less taxed and regulated, is the best way to maximize employment opportunities. Wilmette businesses and organizations deserve our thanks and trust for choosing to set up shop, to do business in Wilmette, for providing employment opportunities, shopping and eating destinations, and places to purchase services. This is a large part of what makes Wilmette the vibrant and interesting place it is to live. I don't want to see more empty storefronts, but policies like this Cook County Minimum Wage Sick Leave Ordinance may do just that. I hope you'll trust the businesses here, many of whom already pay above minimum wage and provide above-market benefits because they know it's good business practice. And I thought it was good to see the good response from the business community on the survey, but I am troubled by the many stories I've heard of businesses that are fearful to speak publicly and give color to their opinions expressed in the survey after last year's intimidation campaign that boycotted businesses if they supported the opting out. Usually, these uncivilized bully tactics are used because arguments and facts don't stand up to scrutiny. So please keep that in mind as you make your decision. Please do what's best for workers and best for Wilmette. Please vote to opt out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, sir, you're it.
I'm in. I'm the cleanup guy, right?
Yep.
My name is Gary Glenn. Can you hear me okay?
You didn't get a chance, okay. So that's it, you're it then.
Oh, okay. My name is Gary Glenn. I've been a Wilmette resident for 23, 28 years, almost. Time passes quickly. Years ago, I was on a committee called BDAG. Does anybody remember the BDAG Committee?
I believe trustee Dodd was on the BDAG as well.
Yes, BDAG Committee Business Development Advisory Group. And what our mission was, was to find out how we can attract businesses to Wilmette. And I feel like I'm here now to do just the opposite and try to convince you to do something so we're not driving businesses away from Wilmette. A couple of things I'd like to comment on. I had a lot of things written, but I'm going to try and make it quick because everybody looks like it's Miller time. It's time to go. One of the things on the stats on business, when they said, "Well, let's take a look back from July 1st to March 31st and see how this affected businesses in the other communities." That's not even a fiscal year. I mean, that's not enough time to make a decision on what you're going to do in your business. If I decide to move my business, and I'm a business owner in Glenview, if I decide to move my business, I have to get out of my lease, I have to decide where I'm going to move, I have to find a new place. Go back and look at the stats in the next two or three years and see how they're going to be. And that's a real concern. I have a real concern about that with the businesses in Wilmette because there's going to be tax implications. Glenview opted out for one specific reason, and I was kind of involved with this with the chamber. They said, "Cook County's not going to tell us what to do. We're going to make a decision in our community what we want to do. And if we want to set things for the businesses, we're going to communicate with the businesses and find out what the businesses want." It's a very interesting situation because one of the other things, and this gentleman brought it up, it's not just raising the minimum wage, it's the benchmarking that takes place. So if I bring somebody in, and I don't pay minimum wage, but I bring people in as unskilled workers, and I train them, like my shop manager came in at $10 an hour, and now she's making three times that, and she's very happy, and she gets paid vacation, and she gets paid sick leave, and she gets bonuses. And everybody that comes in as an unskilled worker in my place gets trained, and they get raises. It's raises based on merit, not mandate. So if we want to give somebody and everybody a working wage, a living wage, then we train them and we bring them up in the organizations. Another consideration, I think, is we lost carsons. Now, I'm sure you're thinking about the tax revenue, right? We've lost car dealerships, the tax revenue. So now we want to rent that space out, and somebody can go there to a place where you have to pay a minimum wage in retail, which somebody brought up as a consultant and said it's very hard in the margins, or they can go to Glenview. Where do you think they're going to move the business? It's economics. It's all economics. And we have to consider, how do we make, which was what BDAG was doing, how do we make Wilmette more competitive, more desirable, a place where businesses want to move business? One of the last things I hear people say, and I said this on some strings, people will say, "Well, I'll pay more." Well, you know what the research shows that that doesn't take place.
Time's up.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. One last one for another elected official who was late to the meeting.
And I apologize. I literally ran off at 9:10.
You missed, you missed my interaction with, with the, with our other, one of our other elected officials here tonight, so that's why we're laughing.
Well, thank you for, for hearing from me. My name is Gail Eisenberg. Last time we spoke, I spoke as a new township trustee about how the township does provide a subsidy, basically, to our businesses who are not paying enough wages for our workers to be able to put food on the table and put a roof over their heads. Instead, we, as taxpayers, are paying for them to come get Instead, we, as taxpayers, are paying for them to come get services from our food pantry. Now, even if you raise the minimum wage and provide sick leave, of course, there will still be a need and a benefit from those services. But today, I also want to speak to you as a mother. Last week, my son Hunter, who's two and a half, had his finger slammed in a door, and I was able to leave work, jump on a train, and meet him at the hospital. I didn't have to worry about taking the sick leave that I needed in order to be with my scared son in the hospital. Instead, I was able to be the kind of mom I wanted to be and meet his basic needs because I have those kind of benefits. The previous speaker told you about the kind of wonderful benefits that he provides to his workers, and I'm so glad to hear from the chamber, both, you know, in the report and last time we were here discussing these ordinances, about the generous offers that are given to most of our employees already. The truth of the matter is that our businesses are doing a great job with our workers, but there are still many who are left behind, and your report proved that. Those are the workers who will benefit from these ordinances, and your study has shown that there are, that there still is a need in our community. I was able to be treated with that kind of dignity, and I was able to treat my son with the kind of respect that I want to treat him with. This is something that I hope that the rest of our workers will also get to experience. Yes, we talk about basic economics, but as an employment lawyer, I want to tell you that it doesn't work that way for the employee. Employees cannot get up and go to any community to find a better wage job. Employees do not have that kind of bargaining power to make the decisions. The businesses have an offset amount of information and an offset amount of power to make, to decide what wages are and what kind of benefits they offer. That's why we have to set minimum standards. I respect that this board decided to have a study period, and I'm glad that you did, and I really appreciate how much time and effort it must have taken to read through the report and all the correspondence that you received, and I hope you take this opportunity to treat our workers with the dignity that I was able to treat, be treated with because of my employer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that concludes public comment. Before moving on to item four, I just want to take a moment to thank everyone that's here. You treated each other with respect. You listened to each other. You were quiet when you weren't supposed to be talking, and I think Commissioner Suffert and you're at more meetings than I am, but this is pretty much our standard in Willmet, and I really do appreciate the fact that our residents act in this way. So thank you very much for what was a very nice public comment, and we almost finished as scheduled at 9:15, so that's great. So we'll move on to item four, which is Village Board Discussion of Next Steps. So as I said at the beginning of the meeting, we'll not be discussing, debating, or making a decision night regarding the minimum wage ordinance. However, I would like to set a schedule tonight, and what the plan going forward is that in my capacity as village president, I will place on the village board's agenda ordinances which, if approved, would repeal the two opt-out ordinances passed by the board last June. But we need to figure out our timing based on trustees' schedules, because I think it's appropriate that we have a full village board for consideration. My understanding is that the June 26th should work for everyone. Is that the case for consideration? We would introduce the ordinance, as I said earlier, of course, we would introduce the ordinance at the prior meeting, and then we would vote on it at the second meeting. So the 26th, does that work for people?
Yes.
Okay, so, and then I think on the 12th, Trustee Kersman, you may not be here when it gets introduced, but we won't be voting that night. Is that okay with you? We can proceed on, okay, because I really do, I feel like we, promise might not be the right word, but we'll use that word. We promised the community that we were going to address this issue within a year if we could. And so if we adhere to that schedule, we will indeed be addressing that practically a year to the day from the meeting where we opted out. Okay, so I think that's, that's the plan. Now, prior to those meetings, I just, I want to run through, I've got about eight or nine questions that I'd like the staff to follow up on regarding the report, because I did read all 436 pages. So I'm just going to give those to you now, Mike, and then they're also on the record. So page 11 of the report, and all my page numbers refer to the PDF file. Let me just get it up here, okay. Of course, I need my glasses to read this. So page 11, there is talk about the regional price parity of Chicago and the rest of the state. Because San Francisco and Seattle are sort of the case studies, if we could, if you could pull those stats for those two cities as well, so we know what, how they might differ from us. And then I think page 26, I think Chair Jacoby answered a question about whether there was, you know, what the opening statement for the resident surveys was, so I don't think I have that question anymore. So I'm jumping all the way to appendix, appendix two, which, page 48 of the report, that's the work area profile report. So what I wonder is, can we get any additional information from the source? And this is, this is the Illinois Department of Employment Security. So can we get average hours work or breakdown between how many full-time and how many part-time employees? If we could get that information? And then is, my understanding from you is that one of these reports is the primary job, and one of the reports are all jobs, whether it's primary or secondary job? So if we could just clarify which report, which of these sets of stats is for one job, or if it's for two jobs, or if it's for secondary job, or whatever, just some clarification on the stats. And then I think it would be interesting, because we are talking about Evanston and Skokie as our neighbors that have opted in, to see the similar statistics for them, so we can just sort of compare ourselves to those larger communities. My next, my next thing is actually a comment. For those of you who have not invested all of the time to read all the reports, I would recommend appendix five, which is the report from the Congressional Budget Office. It's a really good report laying out both sides of the debate. So if you're interested in learning more but don't want to read 436 pages, you might consider reading that. And as well, appendix six has some very interesting research about what's called adjustment channels. And adjustment channels are what people do when minimum wage raises and why, they talk about adjustment channels because it's, why doesn't employment go down when you raise minimum wage? It's because people do all these things. So that was very interesting, I thought. Then I jump to page 313, which is the Harvard Business School report. In the back of that one, there is a chart that shows the Yelp reviews for the San Francisco restaurants. I think it'd be interesting to see what our Yelp reviews are, just to see how similar our restaurant mix is to San Francisco. And then appendix 14 is more IDS, IDES data, so it's the same sort of thing, making sure we understand what's all jobs, what's, and if we can get part-time and full-time. And then my last, my last comment is actually a comment for, for those of you who are interested in learning more about sick leave. Appendix 15 is actually, I thought, a very thoughtful analysis of the pros and cons of paid sick leave as well. And so if you want a good understanding of both sides of that issue, I would recommend that. And then I just have two more. So appendix 17, this is going to be a little trickier. One of the tables in appendix 17 has to be wrong. Exhibit two, which is on page 422 of the PDF file, they've got a breakdown of a variety of statistics. The first column is all, and then there's eight columns breaking it down, and the first column, which is supposed to be total, and the last column are exactly the same, which seems like that might have been a transposition error on the part of the authors. So my request is, if you would reach out to the authors and ask them if there's been an update. That one you may not be successful at, but in case there's been a correction, just so we can have that.
We'll try.
And then the last question is on appendix 19, this was provided by Arise Chicago, and I've heard of them, but if you could provide us more information on who Arise Chicago is, and then on the very last page, there's this reference to fair scheduling. If you could let us know what fair scheduling is. And so that's, those are just some questions that came out of my review, which I thought, if you would share that with the board, it just sort of expands a little bit on the color. I mean, the report is great, and I don't know, Chair Jacoby is still here, thank you for hanging in there. It really was a wonderful report, and again, I can't thank all of the residents who served on the working group enough. So I've just talked a lot. Is there anything that any of the trustees would like to ask the staff? Or, I mean, at this point, we've set a date, and that's really the extent of our business tonight. Trustee Dodd.
I have a couple of things I wanted to ask the staff if they could look into as well, that are somewhat related to what you had asked, I think. And this, one is, in the, in the appendix that talked that President Polanski referred to about getting the breakdown between part-time and full-time, the datas, I am wondering if we could get any impact on, of those numbers, how many of the numbers include people in collective bargaining agreements? So if we could get that number.
Mm-hmm. That might actually be available too, from IDS. I'm not sure.
We're not sure. I know. I already asked, but I'm asking again for on the record. It was mentioned by somebody here who spoke today that a couple of communities have used this recently in reevaluating their decisions, so I would ask the staff if we could get an update, if there are communities, since we last addressed this in June, that have opted in or out of the ordinance. If there's been any changes, it would be helpful to have that update. And then the third thing, which, and this might be that I just didn't get all the way through the material, but is there anything, some of the comments that we think that came up a year ago was just some concern from the businesses around the sick leave ordinance and employees, I don't know what the right word is, but abusing it, not using it for the right relevant thing, and is there any studies that, do we have anything that shows that? And if there is, I'd just be interested. So in other words, people taking a sick, sick day to go to the Cubs game. So anyways, just if there is a study I'd be interested in, because that was a concern that was raised. So those would be my three things on top of what you asked.
Anybody else? Any further questions?
Just to add to the summary of the Cook County ordinances, I think this is very helpful. I appreciate that the board did this. I know the sick leave is the one that is probably the most confusing, so I would like just a little bit further explanation. I know it's in the ordinance, but I believe, you know, just if you, if you offer vacation time, if you offer sick time.
Right, there's provisions where you don't have to change, if you do like paid time off already, that can be used for anything, right?
Right, that you don't have to additionally pay sick leave, and, you know, I think this concerns a lot of part-time businesses, so maybe a sample, like if you are, you know, if you have a part-time employee, what does this mean to you?
Okay. Corporation Council, got that? Okay.
I have two questions. Someone from the audience made a comment about an example of an 18-year-old working for the Park District. My understanding is this ordinance, government entities are not covered, but I get, is that correct?
I'll let Mr. Snide.
You are correct, the governmental entities are exempt from these ordinances.
So Park District would not be covered, is that correct?
Correct, Park Districts do not have to abide by the ordinances.
Okay. And then my other question would be, if an ordinance was, if we opted back in, what happens if a year from now, the state of Illinois changes their minimum wage? Does, does the ordinance that we adopt in any way, you know, can it be adopted in a way to contemplate changes in state law?
I guess I'll leave that to Corporation Council as well.
And you can let us know later on that.
Well, I mean, we can absolutely look into the fact that a sunset provision based upon certain action by the state, also, it depends on the action by the state. If the state passes a statute that says homegrown communities can't do anything in this area and kind of wipes away that whole question, then any ordinance we have would be of no effect, as well as the county ordinance would be no effect. So we can put our own sunset provisions in there, but again, it would also, it would also depend on what the state actually says, which we won't know for, if they do anything.
But if there's more to share on that, would you include that in the?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, to trustees. Okay. All right, so I don't believe we have any other business to discuss tonight, so item six on the agenda is adjournment. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We stand adjourned at 9:32 PM.